Everyone, hello. It is 7:31, I'm late. No. I'm going to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and to remain standing to remember all those serving across the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting of March 20th, 2019. I want to introduce the consultants table. We have John Collins, Dennis Lindsay, Rick Golden. To my right, we have Robert Anzalone. To my left, we have Chris Gerger, Rich Catagio, Secretary Gellnagle, and I'm your chairperson, Maria Hunter. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from March 6, 2019? If so, do I have a motion to accept?
I make the motion.
Who wants a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's four yes. Okay. I can't remember this pen. Okay, first item on the agenda is ALDI. Review and discuss amended site plan for placement of a grocery store within existing commercial center. Proposed modifications include revision to the front facade, addition of a new side door as well as cart storage area adjacent to building. The proposed store relocated within a portion of Kohl's and Woodbury Center at 43 Centre Drive and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 225, block 2, lot 1.12. Good evening.
Good evening. Jonathan Ekman with ALDI. I have Tim Sheik here with APD, and then John Canning and Veronica with Kimley Horn. They will be speaking to traffic and parking analysis, Tim to a couple of the other items, and myself to any of the ALDI-specific questions that you may have. So, looking forward to presenting this to you. I'm going to turn it over to John and Veronica for the first bit.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We did submit a traffic study that was requested by your traffic consultant dated February 11th for the replacement or repurposing of 25,000 square foot of the existing Kohl's department store with an ALDI. We've studied the operation of Woodbury Center's driveway as it intersects with New York State Route 17. We feel the traffic from the shops development, which was across the street, which we had previously studied. The ALDI store is conservatively projected to add 90 additional trips on top of the traffic that would be already there, and an additional 15 motorists are expected to stop in. They'll already be passing by, and somebody's asked them to get some milk or orange juice, and they'll stop in. There won't be new trips to the roadway system because they'll already be on their way going home. Of course, there will be some shoppers who will already be at Woodbury Center who will, you know, patronize ALDI, but we did not take credit for those, so we feel we're somewhat conservative in that. The results of our analysis were summarized on Table 7 of our report, and that indicates that every one of the individual turning movements at the intersection will be operating at less than 70% of capacity. So that's a V over C, or a volume-to-capacity ratio of .7 or less. Further, the average delay for vehicles passing through the intersection in the peak hours, this is out through 2030, which is a long-term projection, will be just 27 seconds or less, and less than 20 seconds per vehicle on the mainline movements of New York State Route 17. So these findings allow me the confidence to conclude that the proposed conversion of the Kohl's space for use as an ALDI supermarket will not have a significant impact, and that the intersection will operate at good levels of service through 2030. And I'd like to introduce Veronica Preziosso, who's a new colleague of mine, and she did the parking analysis, so she's here to present that, and we'll together answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, John. So, I'm talking about the parking analysis that we did. It showed that existing, the counts showed that there are currently 1,403 spaces total in the entire parking lot. The maximum number of spaces that were taken during the peak hour was only 20% of the total, so about 285. In the future, with ALDI, we have to account for space for the dumpsters and for the shopping carts, so we subtracted 13 parking spaces for that. So the total parking spaces is now 1,390. And after accounting for seasonality, because we took the counts in February, the max number of spaces that were taken during the peak hour became 454. And we also accounted for the holiday shopping season, in which case the maximum number of spaces that were taken during the peak hour was 717. So we even looked at all the parking sections right in front of Kohl's and what would be ALDI, and we found that there were more than enough parking spaces for the combined uses of the two. Finally, we prepared a shared parking analysis, which indicated that the peak parking demand would be 12% less than the 1,421 spaces that are required per the code. So, in consistent with the provision in your code, we are requesting that you provide a 2.2% parking waiver from the 1,421 spaces to 1,390 spaces.
Do you have any questions? Just give me a second, I'm going to go to John. Do you have any thoughts, concerns, that you want to respond to that before I go to the board members for the traffic? Everyone got the memo from John dated the 14th of March and also the 20th?
I'm going to, we have two response memos. One is March 14th, that deals with the parking and other issues, and the other one is dated today because there was a mix-up, and that responds to the item that John Canning talked about. We'd expect to today's memo, I have extra copies for the board if you don't have them. We reviewed the traffic study in detail, and we found it to be acceptable, and we concur with their conclusions that will not modify the level of service, and in fact, as John indicated, 70%. I have to note that most of the traffic here is going to be localized type of traffic as opposed to destination-type traffic, and not going to have people coming off the thruway per se. We'd expect to the parking, the existing center, as well as with or without ALDI's, is going to be basically underparked, there's going to be so much number of spaces that are unused, but there's nothing we can do about that, so there is sufficient parking. And they went into last step taking into account the worst case, did the shared parking analysis, not based upon observations, but based upon the code requirements, and we concur that the variance, or the waiver of some, I think it comes out to be 31 spaces from what's required would be adequate for, I think that's a 2%. The other two items that we talked about, we had covered last time, I think there was from Representative ALDI that with the one truck loading, the one truck dock in the back would be sufficient since you controlled your deliveries, and secondly, there would be no cart corrals in the parking area, and you would continue to police it in case there's an errant cart in the parking area. And that basically is our summary on that information submitted.
Thank you. Before we go any further, Rich, any thoughts, concerns, or questions about traffic for either consultant?
Oh yeah, I guess my position is the same last meeting or two. Kohl's is an established business, it's been there for years, so I assume the traffic count is going to stay the same. ALDI is, whatever traffic, it's incremental. And again, when I talked about Route 32 corridor, within the new interchange, within two or three miles, traffic is going to increase with all these new applications. And I know Maria's working on, what I ask for is a digital simulation model, so we don't have, so we can see, is there congestion? So, I'm still pushing for that, and it's hard for me to look at each application on paper with your traffic counts to conclude, you know, is traffic going to flow, or are we going to have congestion? So, I'm still pushing for a digital simulation model. Hopefully, in the next month or two, Maria can come up with a recommendation. That's my concern about Route 32 with all these new applications.
Thank you. Chris?
No questions or concerns.
Robert, about traffic?
I said something about the cart return, but we'll do that later, probably.
Well, we can talk about it since it's in the parking.
Rich, what responsibility does a store have for a cart getting out of control or hitting a car, or is it your own risk that you park there?
It's your own risk.
Okay. That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, so it's your own risk. I mean, it's certainly not a unique situation where there is an approved project, whether it be Walmart, or whether it be Kohl's, or whether it be Home Depot or something like that. They have carts that go around, and they've said, and it's in their best interest, and every development like this, best interest to go ahead and hire people to go ahead and make sure that doesn't become a problem, because if it does become a problem in the parking lot, people aren't going to come there. So it's not going to help anybody by that. But if in fact, somebody goes ahead and backs into it, or somebody lets a cart go and it goes down an incline enough to go ahead and dent your car, that would be between the owner of the property, potentially the person who went ahead and pushed something that they shouldn't have, and whoever gets damaged. So it has nothing to do with the village.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Just give me a second. I just want to step back for a moment. For the record, GML was sent out to Orange County DPW, and the Orange County Department are planning on February 20th, so 30 days have gone, well, 29 days have gone by, so we're good. We've received reports from Mazer and Kimley Horn, we have a report from H2M from March 14, but what I want to touch on is parking. Dennis, we had this, you spoke with Gary, and he inspected the loading area and found that at the time of inspection, there was no parking in the back of the building, and you're all aware of that, and we're good with that now?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. Cross that off my list. All right, anything else that you'd like to talk about before I go to Dennis?
I just want to speak to the carts really quickly. I want to reiterate that our business model is actually a benefit to most developers and shopping centers. They like how we do our cart system because it keeps the carts away from being, you know, stored in the parking field. Most of our stores, 99% of the carts are returned to, back to the quarter-for-cart area car corral. So it's a benefit to the customer, it's a benefit to the developer, to the landlord, and it actually minimizes the carts that are left kind of astray. And our employees do look out for that 1%, so just wanted to make sure that it is in the best interest of landlord, ALDI and the customers, really.
I know that I return my cart for my quarter, it's a matter of principle.
Yeah.
It's economics.
Yep.
But, yeah, it was a nice day, though, it was a summer day.
In climate weather, heavy snowfall, it can, you know, but the employees know that, they look out for it.
They'll be more attuned to that fact on those bad days?
Yes, they are.
We can always
Put that in.
Put some kind of a stipulation in there somewhere. I'm sure Rick can craft something about cart corralling in the wintertime, or
In climate weather.
I don't know, I don't know how we can
What you've done in the past, though? Right, you had a similar instance with Cosmos, when they wanted outdoor dining. You didn't know if it was going to be a mess, if there's going to be papers around, and so you crafted something that says that if it is, that the building inspector can speak to them about fixing it up, and if it doesn't get fixed up in a reasonable fashion, then on the one-year anniversary, or earlier if necessary, of their special permit, it would return to the board on the recommendation of the building inspector, and you would handle it at that point. So I think that you'd probably want to have something crafted by Rick similar, that if it becomes a problem, if there are complaints, or if the building inspector notices that they're creating a hazard or anything like that, and it's not maintained, his first option, I'm sure, would be to talk to the manager of the store, and if it doesn't get corrected, then it would have to come back before you.
Okay, all right.
That's good.
Anything else that you want to present to us before I go to Dennis and go over his memo?
In relation to traffic and parking, or overall?
Overall.
Okay, yeah, we'll jump in.
Tim Sheik with APD Engineering. So I just want to talk real quickly about a couple of the comments that we had from the planning board, and how we've addressed those, as well as H2M. When we were here previously, we had mentioned that we were updating the front facade, the front look of the store, so that should be now in the packages they have, that we feel that that more is conducive to what's out there today, kind of getting away from the original design that we had out there. There was also a comment previously about the signage, the logo, or the ALDI has a five-color logo signage. We've incorporated within this middle package the ALDI's corporate logo package, so you can go ahead and see what that looks like. I think it was mentioned before that the board may have the ability to provide a waiver for that requirement, for the signage.
I'll go ahead and weigh in. We looked for the authority of the board to have such a waiver, and there is no authority. So if you want to have more colors than the four that are needed, you'd have to get a variance from the ZBA to go from four colors to five colors. The board just doesn't have the authority to make that determination.
Okay. Do you want to weigh in on that, or?
Even if it's a corporate?
Still, I think the four colors was meant, in fact, to go ahead and accommodate national brands. There aren't very many national brands that have more than four colors in a logo. Not saying you can't have it, but there really is no general authority, or specific authority, for the planning board to be able to waive a provision, and if there's no authority to waive it, you don't have the authority to waive it. You're a slave to the code. And the code says four colors. They want five, they can go to the ZBA. I don't think it's a particularly difficult variance issue, because the issues that are involved with variances are whether or not it changes the character of the neighborhood, whether or not there are any physical or environmental concerns that arise from this, et cetera. There are basically five factors in a balancing test. And so, when you look through those, and you get some advice on those, I think you will find that it would probably be a pretty strong application to simply have four to five colors. But, that's up to you, but you'd have to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals. So this board couldn't approve anything with the five colors. So you can, I'm not saying you can do this, but if you were to come back with four colors, then they could go ahead and approve it, but five colors, you're going to have to get a variance.
I'm just going to ask a question. On the, it says yellow, orange, red, and you have dark blue, light blue. From the orange to the red, it's not really a red, it's a shade of orange, is what I'm looking at. And the blue, it's a dark blue, light blue, but it's a shading, and what is, what's this color back here? Is that the dark blue?
The dark blue.
That's the dark blue?
Yeah.
All right, because it almost looks black, okay.
Yep.
Because we don't color, we don't take into consideration the white? What colors don't we take into consideration for the colors? It's white?
It would really be up to Gary. If Gary said that, for instance, dark blue and light blue is one color, it's blue, or light orange and darker orange is one color, it's orange, then that would be fine. But right now, they have presented it as five colors. They certainly are five distinct shades of color across the rainbow. So I think in a plain reading of that is that this would be five colors. But if they get a determination from Gary that it's only four, then you'd be able to approve it.
All right, so you know what to do with Gary, with the shades versus colors. You'll talk to him?
Yeah, we can really talk to him.
Okay. Board members, with the signage, because are we doing signage right now? Everyone's seen the little package signage? Because they're showing They're all on the building, right? There's not going to be any, there's no freestanding sign?
There's one on the main facade here, and one on the side facade here.
Okay. And Dennis, that all fits within the percentage of signage for the building?
We don't have a full area of the building there, but generally, it's 10% of the lawn area, so I think we probably include it there. The only question
The only question I had was the number of signs. You have two large signs on the facade there. I'll have to check with Gary if that's permissible.
Okay, okay.
Were there two there before, though?
There is a Kohl's sign on the side facade that's going to be removed.
I believe it's in this general vicinity.
Okay. Maria, that was one thing I had to check, and I got to check with Gary. I was just looking right now to see if I could find it.
You don't have, you have the old one there. Can I see that one right there?
This one?
Yeah, just check with Gary on that, because I know there was a sign on the side of the building. All right, signage. Anyone on the board have any questions about the signage?
None good.
Good?
All good.
Good, okay. Next subject.
Okay, next subject. So going through some of the, so on March 14th, there is a memo from H2M of comments they had, so I just want to address some of those real briefly. One of the comments they had was regards to a bulk table showing code compliance. That be added to the cover sheet. We actually have the bulk table, and we've added that to the cover sheet, so we can definitely include that within the package. Going through the different setback requirements, height requirements, all that stuff, we didn't see anything that we're in violation of. I think the only thing is the signage that we just talked about, and the colors of the sign that we were of. There is a specific question raised, or asked about the increase in impervious area, so we took a look at that. The existing, the increased impervious area is roughly 1,270 square feet, but the overall site itself is 68.4 acres, so it turns out to be such a small percentage, impervious-wise, that increases. The code requires, I think, 65% impervious area. The site itself right now is at about 35%, and the small amount that we're adding doesn't really even trigger up to the next percentage point. We talked about the cart corrals. There was a comment about the Kohl's utilities, and showing kind of a repaving in the backside of that for those questions. The Kohl's utilities that we included, on the plan itself, it says for reference only. The reason we did that was we just wanted to show the board how those utilities are being brought in for ALDI, but ALDI's not actually doing that construction. That construction is being done separately by Kohl's, and actually will be completed and a lot repaved before ALDI even comes in to start doing their work. So it really wouldn't be relevant to have that shown on our plans as repaving.
Okay.
There was a request to add the detail of the dumpster detail. Typically, we would have that on the landscape or on the architectural plans. We can add that to our plans. We try not to duplicate details, because then something gets mixed up out in the field. They have an older detail, they build to the older detail, and everything kind of gets messed up. But it is going to be shown on the architectural plans. They'll be submitted into the building department for their review approval. There's a couple other minor comments. There was one question about lighting, whether or not there's going to be additional new lighting out there. There is no new parking lot lighting that's being proposed. ALDI does have some downlighting that's going to be on the front of the store, that'll illuminate the walkways and the front entrance, but nothing out of the parking field itself. They wouldn't be adding any new lights out there. There's a couple cleanup items with an ADA ramp that we're showing on the civil plans that needs to be added to the architectural plans with the exit stairways coming out of the building, and we're cleaning those up. There was a question about the unoccupied space. I don't know if John, you want to talk real quickly about that?
It's on the operation plan. The space directly behind what will be the freezer there, there's a hallway that is behind there, mainly because of a column line, and we just didn't want to push our freezer back into that space. So that is why we've left that unoccupied.
And then the last thing I want to talk about was there were some referrals that were been asked, been talked about with regards to the Woodbury Fire Department. I did talk to the building department, and they stated to me that once the final plans are provided to them, they will forward those on to emergency services for the final review and approval. We did reach out to Harriman Water, and I spoke with Bill Sherry over there. He said they don't do will-serve letters. He said that go ahead and submit in your plans, and it shouldn't be an issue. The water and sewer that's generated by ALDI's, there's no public restrooms, it's only restrooms for the employees themselves. So, we designed septic systems for it. It's typically, the demand is about 300 gallons per day, which is about the same as like a single-family home. So it's really not going to be a large demand or impact on the sewer or water systems that are out there.
Just give me a second on that.
Yep.
Will-serve with the water?
Sometimes they can't get will-serve letters. We've had this with a number of them. All we've asked them is to demonstrate that they've made an application, or they've asked for it, and if they say no, they still need to get the service, okay? There's no impediment, I would expect here, to the Village of Harriman, for making the water connection. It was there before. But that's their responsibility, and we typically ask for it. Or proof that they've requested.
Did you meet with Mayor Welly yet, or is that next week? Because I actually saw him yesterday, and I forgot what he
I'm sorry, say that again?
Mayor Welly, he's from Harriman. Have you met with him?
We have not.
Because I thought he said he was meeting with you, or met with you. Are you having water? He might have had a different
Maybe Kohl's is, they're providing our water service.
Okay, all right.
That could vary, because they're bringing in the water service up to the building.
All right, so if you can follow up with that, that'd be
Okay, yep.
That'd be great, thank you. Anything else on your?
I think that's everything I have on my list. So any questions you may have.
All right, so I can go on to my consultants now?
Yes.
You're good?
Yep.
Beautiful. Dennis, you're up.
Well, we've gone over much of the memo. There was a five-page memo that we distributed. We've gone, the board's gone over a number of the issues. The cart collection was a big one, and I think you have discussed crafting a resolution condition that would handle that to your satisfaction. On water and sewer, in addition to the Village of Harriman, the connection that they make to the building, since it's a fire connection, should be run through the building department. In the fire department, they have specific requirements on the valving access and that sort of thing, and it's better that you know upfront rather than at the end. As far as ARB, they have submitted materials for you for ARB. We already talked about the one particular item with the signage, in terms of the colors, and the corridor, and the other items that I think that we have are minor. There was certain small corrections, typos on the EAF that need to be corrected and resubmitted. Other than that, unless you have any questions on the report, I don't have anything further.
Dennis?
Yes.
Dennis, you had a comment about illumination of the signs. Do we know the hours of operation?
That's something that you might want to ask them?
Yeah. Yes, just to clarify, we are open, in most of our stores, nine to nine. The signage, I did state that it would be on throughout the night. It will turn off before midnight. The logo signs on the building will turn off before midnight. The parking lot lighting, it will not change from what it is today. We will not have any control over any of the parking lot lighting, and it is going to remain as it is.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I'd suggest on that is we should take a look and see if there are any further restrictions on Woodbury Center when it first came in, and whether there's an overall restriction on the lighting of the signage, I'm not sure. So I will take a look for that and see if I find anything.
Anything else for Dennis?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Chris?
No, I don't.
Rich?
No.
Rick?
The only thing, other than the signees that we talked about as far as the colors, is that we will need an amended site plan, special permit, and ARB public hearing for all three.
Okay. Board members, the request for 2.2% waiver of parking, which John says averages out about between 30, 32 parking spots, less than 40 cars. Do we have to do a formal waiver on that, Rick, if we so desire?
Yes.
Okay. Let's discuss that. Board members, Rich, what do you think about the 2.2% waiver for the parking?
I'm okay.
Chris?
I'm okay with all of it.
Fine.
All right, so I'll offer a motion that we grant the waiver for the 2.2% parking.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so you have the waiver, that's the parking. The signage. Dennis, I did find a little picture that showed the side of the building with the Kohl's sign on it. So it's
I think that they, I think they had one there. The only I'm not sure is whether they got any, they received any variance, and I just want to take a look want to take a look at that.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the map stamped February 19th. It shows the little picture on the side there. Okay. What's that? Oh. All right, so the water, we'll work on that. Any other... You showed us the samples last time you were here?
Yes, we did.
So we're, board members, you're okay with the samples?
Yes.
All right. With all that being said, you're going to check into the colors with the building inspector, and if he, see what his decision is, and then I'll let you know which way to go with that.
Okay.
Do we have enough information, board members, to schedule a public hearing?
I think so.
All right. Before we do that, the short EAF.
What it was.
Rick?
Yes?
We declared this a type-two action, so...
We already did.
We're good, all right. So how soon do you think you're going to talk to Gary? And I see our next meeting is...
Right away.
Right away?
Whenever you're ready.
And also, you, even if they required a variance, you do not need to postpone your public hearing for them.
Okay.
So you can address your public hearing, and they'll either get the variance or won't get the variance. Obviously, you wouldn't be able to have a final approval, but you can certainly have the public hearing.
Right. When's our next meeting, Dennis?
Our next meeting is April 3rd.
Did I schedule any public hearings for that? From last on board? Was it the next meeting? I think we scheduled one or two.
The Weiss matter is just for discussion now, and...
Isn't that April 3rd?
Corporate Drive, 14 Corporate Drive.
14 Corporate...
That's a public hearing.
Okay, that, so we only have one public hearing so far for that night?
Yep.
I'll offer a motion that we schedule a public hearing for April 3rd.
I'll second.
On this application, and to request the attorney to do a draft resolution of approval. You still second it?
I'll still second it.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we'll see you on April 3rd.
Okay.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. 2.2% waiver. Excuse me? Oh, you're good to go home, thank you so much. I keep writing the six for some reason today. Next item on the agenda is Woodbury Common Tenant Storage. Review and discuss proposed amendment to the special grid use to allow the utilization of available leasable retail space for tenant storage space. Said property is located off of Route 32 within the Woodbury Common premium outlet shopping center, is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps, a section 225 block 1, lot 70.2. There's actually two lots on there. Dennis, you, on your memo, you list two SBLs. But it's only the one that we have to worry about, right? The main one? Or is it...
I think it's the contiguous properties, it's the whole thing.
Okay. All right. Good, John?
Good evening, board. Consultants, Madam Chairwoman, it's a pleasure to be back again. Here to continue, I guess, open the discussion with what we started speaking about February 6th of this year. After our discussions with the, with the board consultants and the building inspector and zoning officer, we came up with what we thought were six reasonable conditions on our proposed tenant storage, or the use of our leasable area as tenant storage. You have the memo with the, with the conditions, and happy to answer any questions, concerns. Hear any thoughts on what it is you guys may be concerned about?
All right. Dennis, I'm going to jump over to you. Just, just for the rec, March 5th, building department submitted to the Orange County DPW and the Orange County Department of Land for the GML for the tenant storage. So Dennis, I'm going to jump over to you, because I... Dennis?
Yes, I'm here. Okay. I thought there was going to be a question, not just that. All right. We've given you a memo, and in the beginning of that, it starts with just what John said. He met with the building inspector, and they went over what would Gary thinks would be reasonable to allow this as a permitted use within the zone there, in his interpretation, and there were conditions attached to it. I know John has said six. There was one that I deleted, and I'll tell you why I deleted, and I just, maybe there's a reason, because I talked to Gary, and he, from his notes, he didn't recall this one as being conditioned. That's the one that occupancy of a tenant storage space is restricted, I'm sorry, yeah, tenant storage may not be contiguous to the tenant's merchandise floor area. We took that out because that would actually be, everybody has storage in the back of their store, that's fine. But if, if there's a place next door that happens to be contiguous by a wall, and they want a store over there, that would be storage space, I assume. If it's a separate space that you're trying to lease as a retail space, it becomes vacant, and a store on the other side wants to use that. I don't know that that would be prohibited, but that would be TSS space, I guess.
Yeah, no, I, yes, I would agree with that interpretation. That's why it may not, I mean, it could be contiguous.
Okay. I didn't, yes, so I didn't include that requirement, because I could see that happening, a possibility. Frankly, if, if a retailer needs space, they're going to try to pick the one, if there's a store empty, that's closest to them. And I would think that if there's an empty space, the first places to look for are the adjacent spaces, whether they want to use that for storage space. Because other than that, they could actually take deliveries into their store and to the store next door, kind of makes sense. Not that we want that to be long-term, and really, you're not looking for it long-term either. So I just reiterated, if you will, the conditions, because those were the ones that John had enumerated and that Gary had talked to him about. But in addition to that, I said that any conditions, reasonable conditions of the board, whatever you think should be attended to this, should also be attached. And I gave you some thoughts of mine. One is shared space. Will a tenant storage space be for one customer, one retailer, or would it be shared? If it's going to be shared, that makes a whole number of issues. Security, because there's going to be multiple tenants, there'll be, how do they share the space? Are they going to be devising walls? Are they going to, is it free-for-all? So I don't think you want that, but I wanted to find out, is there any intention to have tenant storage space as a shared space between different retailers, or is it just for one?
It certainly would be a possibility that a larger space on a temporary base could be divided up into more or less lockers. We have situations at other centers where, we call them lockers, but they're, really, they're chain-linked fences with, with locks, padlocks, that only that tenant has a key to. You know, so yes, everything's exposed, but multiple tenants do have access to that specific suite. As the landlord, we would be responsible for the security and maintaining all other code compliance for that tenant suite, but some tenants, for a period of time, may just need a 10-by-10 locker, not, and nothing more. So we actually do have that model in many of our centers.
All right, that's something for the board to consider. I had suggested in the memo, a generic type. Rick has other language for that, but what I was saying is that if you attach conditions to this that are universal in nature, where Gary can implement it, if they have a tenant storage space open up, it's not, they can't lease it right away, and they want to use it for tenant storage space, if they can comply with the conditions that you establish in a general resolution, then Gary could implement it. For things like large spaces, a large thing where they would want to split it up to multiple users, that may be one where you want to come back here and have, have a discussion about that, because right now, that's a black box. I don't know if that would be, the Raya storage area on Bond Street is handled that way, but that's a storage facility. It has multiple tenants, they have a space that's defined, it works, they only have keys to their space. But there are a number of issues to be concerned about when you start doing multiple tenants. So I just leave that to the board, but that was a question, whether they have multiple tenants, and how you want to regulate that, to what extent.
Just, in response to that, Bill, Bill Penner, guess, informed me that I believe the board has considered temporary storage space in the old food court, which is now demolished and being converted to retail. But that was, it wasn't identical where we had the caged lockers. So it was a situation that we previously had at Woodbury Common that was considered and approved by the board.
You may have had it, it may have been successful. I don't know that we talked about it, because it may have just happened that way, maybe we didn't realize that, and so I just don't remember having a conversation about that, okay?
Okay.
Okay, the next item is the advertising storefront ARB, and that is that if a space for TSS extends, it has to be on the service area, because that's the only way they're allowed to come in and out. But if it extends over to a courtyard area where there's pedestrian traffic, there'll be an existing storefront, most likely, windows, maybe a door, what, however, it depends how it shakes out. Just the question is, how do we handle that front? Do they black out the windows? Do they put advertising in the windows? How do people know it's, the door, there's no access, there's nothing in the front, people don't get in, in that way? So just how do you handle that, if it comes up? If we can come up with something for the generic one, then we can just include that condition, and it won't be an issue. You can go ahead. But I just don't know how that would be handled. If there's an existing sign up there, does that sign get taken down, I would assume? Because otherwise, people are going to think they, they're going to want to get in, knocking on the door, and that sort of thing.
Don't you usually have something that says Woodbury Common Simon Outlet or something, and you put it in the window?
Yes.
I think I've seen that before.
And that's standard, that's standard across our portfolio, is, you know, you mentioned blackout, it happens to coincide with our corporate colors of choice. But yes, we do put decorative, our logo would be on there, maybe, you know, maybe this is a temporary situation for three months while, you know, before a tenant actually takes over the space and starts their work, so maybe it's a coming-soon advertisement for that future tenant. We do it all different ways, but we certainly don't like blank storefronts, we don't like blank windows, we, we dress them up as best we can, and that's, that'll be done at the property level.
If you, yeah, if you happen to have prior photos, black and whites, maybe, Bill, you can email them to Dennis, so he has an idea, and then we can, or send it to, actually, send it to the building department, and then she can forward it on to the board members and the consultants, and then we'll all be on the same page with it.
And the other thing is the sign.
Sorry, I should have...
I'll jump in. Bill Penner, yes. The other thing that happens is the sign that would be on the front of the building would come down anyway, and, and so there would be no advertising for any tenant or anything in that space, but as Maria said, there's, you know, the graphics that we put on empty spaces until somebody comes would be kind of our, our standard system, anyway. But I'll send Gary some, some pictures, and Dennis as well.
Well, I'd suggest you send them to the board, to the building department, and distribute to the board. If the board agrees with it, it will be put into the resolution, so that you don't have to come back when you get a new one, as long as there's a full understanding of what's going to be done.
Get it to the building department. Anything else, Dennis?
The only other things is a normal condition that I always have, and that's for pedestrian circulation and safety. I would doubt they're going to do any exterior work on this, this is just going to be a building. But if they do, tearing down the sign, that sort of thing, if there's overhead work, they have to follow normal safety precautions, I think it's their normal practice, but you generally include something along those lines. Utilities, I don't expect there would be any change to the utilities, but if there was any outside work that would rise to the level of a site plan, it would not be a standard...
What'd you want, that generic?
Flexible, if it's a flexible resolution, then the flexible resolution would not apply if there's any exterior site plan work. And the ESOS, I don't think this has any impact on ESOS, but if you think so, we should refer to the ESOS.
And we would have to, I see you have Seeker on here, would we have to...
Seeker, I think you fall, you could make a determination, but I would assume that this falls under the auspices of the previous approval in 2012. But there is a public hearing, because this is a site plan amendment and special permit, and AR...
Is there ARB?
I guess there's ARB in terms, look, if we're going to have a site plan and special permit change, the thing is this, I think it's only special permit conditions that are changing. However, if you read the code, every special permit is required to have a site plan. So if you move into the site plan and special permit, there's going to be a public hearing. You might as well throw ARB in because of the work that they're going to do on the storefront, and then you've covered all your bases, and it's one public hearing.
Okay. Rick?
No.
I'll start with Chris. Any thoughts, concerns, or questions on the tenant space?
No, overall, I like the idea, maybe take a little traffic off 32, because you won't have the trucks going back and forth to Bond Street.
That'd be...
I agree with it, I think it's a good use of the space that's not being used.
All right. Rich?
I'm good.
Robert?
What would be the shortest period for a tenant to use that space? One month, would be a month-to-month situation?
30 days would be typical.
Standard, right? Yeah.
And on that response, I guess, when a tenant comes in in a certain area, you're going to, you're going to let the building department know who's where, and then maybe you can let them know, you can have some kind of stipulation that you'll advise them when it's changing?
No, I...
I don't, I don't know.
One of the conditions is, and a concern of Gary, Gary's was...
Oh, that's right.
That with every, you know, the tenant would have to provide all the required plans and submittals to obtain a building and occupancy permits, and that with every turnover, the 911 map would have to be updated.
Okay. And so each individual store would do it, not, not you? Is that what we're, I want to make sure that we're clear on who's going to be responsible to update that map for Gary? Whether the store should probably submit it to Woodbury Common and Woodbury Common...
Yeah, it would be up.
You're, you're responsible.
It would be up. It would be the landlord, yeah.
So, Rick, I'm sure you'll have something, like some, craft some kind of language with that, just so it...
Do you know what I said?
Yeah, thank you. What did I write somewhere? I think I'm good. So GML was sent out, what did I say, on the 5th? You said our May meeting is...
April 3rd.
April 3rd?
May or the April?
The April, excuse me.
April meeting is April 3rd, and then the next one would be the 17th, I guess?
Okay. I'm just worried about being that the 5th with the GML was sent out, but we probably don't have to...
You could put it for the 3rd, if you wish, and if you have the GML, then you can take action if not, you'd have to take action at the next meeting, but you could conclude your public hearing.
All right, so, so far for the 3rd, we have Corporate Drive and Aldi, right?
Yes, and the only other thing is that Bill's going to get that materials in. Bill, when do you think you'd be able to get that material in on the storefront and everything?
Friday.
Friday? It's not a heavy lift, so I think you can waive your, your requirement, and it can be done that day. But, but it has to be in by Friday.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right.
If I could interrupt, if there's one remaining slot for that 3rd meeting, I think we'd want to keep that open pending the next item.
That's what I'm going to get at.
So if this, if you want to push this to the 17th, we have no issue.
That might be easier then.
Okay. But you're telling me that you want the second one to go on the 3rd? Rather than, okay. All right, then I'll offer, I'll offer a motion that we have a public hearing on this application to tenant storage for April 17th.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me amend, I'll make another motion that would authorize the attorney to draft a resolution of approval with the items that we discussed tonight.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm glad people are reminding me.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So April 17th, public hearing. All right. Next item on the agenda. Is Woodbury Common Michael Kors rebuild? Review and discuss performed site plans submitted for demolition and rebuild of the Michael Kors building with expansion into existing service board. Said property is located off of Route 32 within the Woodbury Common Premium Outlet Shopping Center and is known on the Village of Ray Tax Service Section 225 Block 1 Lot 70.2. Is the applicant here for that application?
Yes, the applicant is present.
Been a long day, Rob. Okay, just real quick, we received the narrative and the application from February 22nd. And on March 5th, the GML was sent out to Orange County. Would you like to explain what you're planning on doing?
Sure. Go to the map, it's probably easiest.
I was trying to figure that one out.
Yeah. Basically, what this map shows is in the gray and red outline is the existing Michael Kors building. Market Hall is here on my left. This is the gazebo is over here, the fountain's here. This is the Red Apple Court area. What we're proposing to do is take down the existing Michael Kors building. It's a conglomeration of one, two, three, four sections of wood frame construction from
The entire building?
The entire building. Including foundations, everything's coming out of the ground. The proposal is in the blue, is to put back the building at a different elevation so that it's all one floor level. It'll be new construction, falls within all the height requirements for the district. But again, is to rebuild the entire building. Most of it pushes it back from the courtyard. There is a small area in here that bumps out, but that's kind of tucked in this back corner. But we are actually pushing the building back and somewhat improving limited ESO access. The ESO path does come up through here, but the fire department has told us they're never coming in here because they can't get out. There's no way out because of Market Hall. But the building has access on two sides, like every other building. Market Hall still has access on all fours, on all three sides. In general, the idea came from, Michael Kors started to renovate and the part of the building that's in the back corner is at a different elevation. So they ended up with lots of floor issues, height issues, grade transition. So we basically came in and said, we'll take the building down and we'll now make it all one level. Still somewhat in the characters of the district architecturally, still roof shingles, siding materials that are similar to what's already there, colorations similar to what's there, has larger glass openings for the entrances, similar to Market Hall in design. And again, the, you know, the overall theme is to get this to be all one level. We've worked out transitions in the courtyard. Dennis has made some comments about utilities, but you know, we're always relocating utilities and so this is nothing uncommon to us. But it will improve the building itself and gets it away from kind of the hodgepodge of wood construction that we currently have.
And there's only two entrances?
There's actually an entrance here, here. There's a third entrance, really exit, that's tucked in this back corner on the plan.
Emergency exit or?
It's a normal exit.
Okay.
See if I can find the plane here. There is a plan in your book. It's right here at this door here, Miranda. So this is, the old St. John's building is right outside of here. Here's the main entrance that faces towards the gazebo. There's another door over here. That will come out onto a platform and then there'll be a set of stairs, probably two or three risers and a short ramp. But we have to rework the hardscape out here anyway, so that's something we have to work on, you know, going forward. All right.
I just have a question before we move on. Do the other surrounding stores have dormers?
Yes.
They do, because you're not shown on here, so I just, I just want to make sure.
There are dormers currently on the Michael Kors building.
But the other surrounding buildings?
Some of them do, some of them don't. Not, not every building. You know, we've eliminated some in the past because they end up being just, you know, leaked potentials for the roof. Nobody maintains them.
And they're just for decorative?
They're only decorative. They go into the attics. In a lot of areas, when we did the rental over the last five years, we actually took some of the dormers and actually put light boxes in them so at night they light up, but they're just fake.
Okay. Anything else you want to tell us?
No, can't think of anything.
Actually, real quick before I go to Dennis, timeframe, to take a building down at nighttime? When there's no trap, no pedestrian traffic?
We've applied for a permit to demo the building with Gary already at our risk. We understand that there's no approval. If you don't approve it, obviously, we have the right to tear it down and put it back up the way it was, so, you know, we're going to go ahead. Right now, we're scheduling utilities to be removed over the next week. Once those are done, the building would come down at night. Any of the noisy operations like slamming foundations, anything that's going to disturb the adjacent tenants is all night work. And then the construction schedule for this is to try to have this done and reopened before Thanksgiving.
Okay. Dennis, I'm going to jump over to you now.
Okay. Obviously, the use is permitted. The bulk and area requirements, we always have an issue on the GLA. And that is just keep, trying to keep track of it because the center is constantly changing. Bill's provided us with a GLA summary the last time they had some improvements. And so that needs to be updated, that table that we have. In accordance with their calculations, they're tearing down some buildings, building others. They think they're coming to a 52 square foot remainder on their GLA. But that requires that a certain building there be unoccupied. So there'll be some conditions attached to whatever resolution might improve. Pedestrian circulation and safety, I mean, you asked the key question when they're going to be demolishing this, but there's also the construction and all of that. Woodbury Common is very familiar with the requirements for protecting the public during construction. They just went through a fairly large renovation with the center staying active. All those conditions should be, apply and they should be required to maintain their safety program. As far as the utilities, particularly stormwater, they should have all of their leaders and gutters go through areas that do not discharge through the pedestrian activity. And also, we noted one area in the service area that we thought there was a potential for ponding and they'll have to have their civils take a look at that. And if there is water trapped in any area they can't fix, then they'll need to extend a drain to that location. They're going to put new utilities in here for water. And they're very familiar with our, with the building department's requirements for riser rooms and that sort of thing. They'll need to talk to Gary and make sure that the area and the access is provided in accordance with their requirements. As far as the service area, they're, the expansion of most of the structure where it is expanding is expanding into the service area. It looks like a decent sized service area. It looks like they'll be able to move around adequately. But when they move out, there's a bank of air conditioners and bollards protecting those air conditioners. They're going to have to relocate those. And they haven't shown that yet. And when you start leapfrogging out, you start perhaps getting the service area reduced. We'd want to see that area, even if they just show a reserve area for that, to make sure that it's adequate for deliveries and for ESO access.
Just to address the air conditioning issue, they're all actually going on the roof of the building.
Well, that would solve the problem then. So if you're just occupying the space where they are now and they're moving and they're not going back in another footprint, that'll be fine.
It'll be interior of the?
They'll basically, I don't have the microphone. They'll basically be going on the roof right in this area. The building is stepping back, but that's where the air conditioning is now. And that's exactly where they're going to go on there.
Oh, like we're just light a shade, grays on, okay. Gotcha.
Yeah, this requires ARB approval of the board. They provide some information. I presume they're going to provide samples or colors at your meetings. And if it's in the motif of, that's already been approved through there, other than the signs, then basically it's falling into something you may have already approved. But the board's going to look at the elevations and this requires ARB approval as well. Finally, on signage, there is a approved signage tenant plan for Woodbury Common. And as long as they're complying with the requirements of that plan for these interior signs that are not visible from 32, I think that that's all that needs to be done. Do you submit that to Gary for review for the tenant signage to see that it complies with your approved plan?
What happens is it goes through our offices first for review. They review it to make sure it matches the criteria that was approved. And then the sign can then be submitted for a permit with Gary. So he won't look at them until we've actually looked at them first.
Okay. And the only other thing is this requires a public hearing. Site plan amendment, special permit and ARB.
I just have a question because I'm looking at, trying to try to match these up. I have the main entrance. I can see the roof line and the dormers, no problem. But when I look at the side, the side view, that's facing the courtyard there, it's got all these little hashtags above the roof.
That's glass.
That's glass?
It's just a symbol for glass.
So they're going to put, so you're going to be putting?
So it's simple. So it's going to be, I like, open into the, all right, so.
Because it's not showing on this, this one. You see what I'm saying? It's not being reflected.
Well, that's because that one is a rendering and that one's not. All right, so basically, this is the side that faces, this is the direction going towards Market Hall. So this is just all glass. These are dormers that have glass in them. They'll be backlit. Then this is the display windows. And then this is the facing, that faces the gazebo. So again, this is all glass. These are glass displays. And these are just windows up in the roof. But the symbol is just, the hashing is just like a symbol for glass. On the rendering, they make it shaded and look a little different. And then that side is, that's this face going down towards UG.
All right. Did you bring any samples by chance? Were you going to bring them for the public hearing?
We'll bring them for the public hearing, but there was in your package a sample of materials. And again, it's consistent materials with what we've used at, at the commons. It's asphalt shingles, metal trim, painted trim, glass, wood siding, cement siding, vinyl siding, that all, the whole gambit of materials. And generally, the same colorations that we've used throughout the center.
What I, what we need from you is ARB application with the form, with all the materials?
Okay. I will take care of that.
That needs to be in like tomorrow?
It'll be in tomorrow.
Yes, but if it's the exact same one that you submitted for the 2012 improvements, if you want to submit that again with a new date on it, that would be helpful because that'll show that it's exactly the same.
I can do that.
Okay.
Or you can submit a new one, but I think that would be helpful.
Either way, we'll take care of it tomorrow.
And the roof color is the same roof color? Because I know you had different?
Same roof color that's in the district.
Because I know that's how, it has five different roof colors.
Five colors, five districts, same color.
Showing my history here.
Mine too.
Dennis, anything else?
No.
Rick?
Just that you will have to do, Seeker on this, obviously, it's the, it's demolition and reconstruction, but it's a little bit larger. But I anticipate that you would be doing, making a motion, you could make it now and be incorporated, or be incorporated into the resolution, that in fact, it would simply reaffirm the prior determinations that this slight change is incorporated into the prior secret determination made with respect to Woodbury Common.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Rob, I'll start with you.
I'm good right now.
Chris?
The demolition, are you guys planning to do that? I know at night, but what days during the week, what hours do you typically conduct night work?
Typically, we start at 11 o'clock because the center closes either 9 or 10, depending on what time of year it is. We'd start at 11 and usually we're done and cleaned up by 8 o'clock in the morning.
And that's seven days a week or?
No, not weekends. You know, unless we're behind schedule or we lost like three days because it snowed, rained and, you know, but typically not weekends. But, you know, I can't say that there wouldn't be a Sunday night into Monday. You know, we would start Sunday night at 11 and, you know, we'd be done by 8 o'clock in the morning on Monday because that's really a Monday, not a Sunday.
Okay.
Anything else? Rich?
Just clarification, could you flip back? Right, no, the other one. The one, that one here. You said the blue is the new? And the existing gray is the current size? And what is the red?
The red is just the outline of the gray.
So is the footprint staying the same, increasing or decreasing?
This is the, this is the new, the blue is.
Yeah, so is the footprint?
The footprint is increasing by about 2,000 square feet.
Okay.
From what was currently here. But there's this, there's a building here that we're decommitting.
Yeah.
It's going to be vacant and not be occupied. So we can take that 2,000 square feet and move it here.
Okay, so the gray area outside the blue?
Those are other stores.
Yeah. That's an existing store that stays. This is an existing store that stays.
Okay.
And this is an existing store that's out in the center of the courtyard.
Okay. All right, I got it. Okay. I'm good.
Anyone else have any thoughts, concerns or questions?
Yeah, Dennis and I were just talking. I mean, we have this issue of GLA because you are up to your limit, right? So you're adding approximately 2,000 square feet. That's a little bit less than that, I think, actually, but.
Yeah, a little less.
And you're going to quote unquote decommission other GLA. There's no specific process for such decommissioning. So there's going to have to be something in the resolution that you cannot occupy the space until, I think the most appropriate thing would be for the building inspector to certify that you only have avail, you have available GLA in order to move into this entire space.
Correct. And what would happen, I would think, is that space currently has a space number. And that space number, if another tenant was and tried to attempt to move in there, that space number would require a building permit, which he wouldn't be able to issue for that space because it's been taken off the records as GLA.
But you'll have to provide, what I'm going to put in the resolution is that nobody's going to go in here until you have shown sufficient evidence to Gary that you have that much space available under the GLA.
Correct. The tenant that's in there is actually moving to the building in the middle shortly. So they'll be out of there before this building is actually open.
In a center of this size, having that 2,000 square feet that you're decommissioning, let's say, right now, is not that great, all right? There is a limit, though, on this because you can imagine if, let's say, you had a million square foot of GLA permitted and you had 2 million square feet of building area, 1 million's unoccupied and 1 million is occupied. I mean, that's a stretch. And I did the stretch to say that you, to a point that it's bad. Having 2,000 square feet is not that bad, but there's going to be a limit on that. I don't know what your plans are in the future, but having a shell of a building that you can't occupy, you really don't want to have a lot of that. I don't, okay.
No. And the thing about this is it doesn't increase the impervious coverage. It's really the same, you know, we're occupying impervious coverage at no greater rate than we were before. You know, we're not replacing the landscaping, we're not taking out landscaping. It's all impervious surface. So there, that was one of the concerns is we're adding square footage and decommitting, but it's still, you know, it's still impervious coverage.
Right, but the building area is going to be larger than you're allowed to occupy.
Correct.
What is the plan for that? Is that going to, is something else going down that that's going to be occupied?
There's another, there's another building coming down that we're, there's two processes coming before the board in the future. There's two other buildings coming down that will start
There's two other buildings coming down that will start to balance out the GLA issues.
Okay.
And then, of course, the other thing they've seen, the bigger project.
Okay.
We have a question, Rick.
Our, the Village Noise Ordinance doesn't allow construction after hours, at the nighttime hours.
We're not approving the demo part.
Okay.
So they're gonna get a permit from Gary. It's up to Gary to enforce the hours of operation for that demo.
Yeah, and we've been very consistent with, because we've knocked down several buildings in the last six years, and we've been very careful about the noise issue. We're fairly isolated from almost anything that would reflect sound into adjacent neighborhoods, but we've, we've even not allowed the contractor to haul the material off until 6:00 AM in the morning. So they've, they've been very careful about it. They stack containers nearby, they'll, they'll keep them on site, so that they don't hear the trucks running off-site at any time of the night. So again, we don't allow that noise ordinance to be violated in any way.
Okay. Yeah, I believe, I believe that the, it's not that no noise can happen beyond those hours. I think it's no noise.
Yeah, there's decibels based on zoning and...
Yeah, so, but as I said, you're not dealing with that issue, because it's not part of the approval that you're giving. So Gary needs to enforce the code with respect to the permit that he is issuing with respect to this. And so if anybody believes that it's, it's not being carried out in accordance with the code, they should be contacting Gary, and Gary will look into it and determine whether or not they're in compliance or not.
There is a specific provision in the code under noise for construction activity and for persons desiring to engage in that activity beyond the stated hours, and there's conditions on that, and it's, it's enforceable by Gary.
Okay.
Okay. Any other concerns, thoughts from the board members, consultants, we're good? Alright, with all that being said, I would like to make a motion that we reaffirm SECR from 2012. Is that what you said?
Yes. That this project is within the impacts previously studied, and you've confirmed that under the prior SECR.
Okay. What he said, intended.
I'll second it.
Any thoughts or concerns or discussion, board members? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I'll offer a motion that we schedule a public hearing with the attorney to draft a resolution of approval for April 3rd.
A second day.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And you'll get that ARB in quickly?
And the photographs.
Perfect. Alright, gentlemen, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is congregation, okay, Shalom Day, Highland Mills, revised plans submitted for proposed conversion of a portion of a single-family home, a single-family dwelling to a shul with site improvements. Said property is located at 230 Scunny Monk Road in Highland Mills, as known on the Village over at tax maps as section 247 block 3, lot 4. Just give me a second. Good evening, microphone's on? There's a microphone. Guys, what'd you do?
We're doing that.
Oh, there's, we got four over here.
I didn't realize the microphone left.
Sorry about that. Jeff, can you just pop that door open? Because if you don't pop that door open, it'll get very cold in here. Thank you. Is it on? There's a little button on it. There you go. You're an engineer, you can figure it out. I'm sorry, John.
Well played.
Well, I'm sorry, it's late.
I'm not an electrical engineer, though.
Ah, awesome.
Good evening, everyone. John Queenen from Langton, Tully Engineering, engineer for the applicant. We're back before you with a proposed shul and mikvah at a property located at 230 Scunny Monk Road. We were before you back in October with this proposal to convert the existing single-family dwelling into a shul and mikvah facility. The shul would be on the first floor, the mikvah in the basement. At that time, we received numerous comments from your consultants, and what we've done since that time is we've upgraded the site plan in many different facets, more along the lines to address the consultant's comments, mainly in terms of parking lot layout and grading and landscaping. So we've upgraded the site plan to those aspects. We've added some landscaping islands, we've changed the grade of the parking lot coming around. So if you're familiar with the application, here's the existing, here's the existing dwelling here, and the existing driveway comes in here. So what we were proposing is a new driveway, meeting the village code at 25 foot in width, coming up to a parking area that would go around the side and rear of the building. We've lowered the grade of the parking area down to 5%, as was discussed with the board previously. What that did in turn is we used to have a shorter retaining wall, now we have a longer retaining wall around, in order to accommodate that. So we couldn't get as high as fast, so we were lower with the parking lot, made the retaining wall a little bit higher. What that does, though, in turn, is it basically shields the parking from any of the other properties around, because we're lower. So all of our car headlights and everything will go into the wall, and won't go to the adjacent properties. In terms of that, we've upgraded the handicap, we've provided two handicap spaces here with access. We had some issues with the wood deck last time with the grading, we took a much closer look at it. We've then shifted the handicap access to the main entrance, which is located over here on this corner of the building. The rest of the site remained generally the same. We show now our sidewalk connections. The front of the house remained pretty much untouched as it is today. So at that point, that's the major changes to the site plan. We've also incorporated some landscaping islands throughout the parking lot that we didn't have before, and we provided a landscaping and a lighting plan for that. The applicant had prepared some floor plans, which were included for your reference. They've also completed some exterior elevations. I didn't, after a review of those, I went back to the applicant, and I don't think that they really fit in with the character of the neighborhood. So I had the applicant, which he's currently doing now, is going back and reevaluating those for submission. So that's kind of why we didn't give you those at this point. However, the application had to, had to continue on, per se, the train had to leave the station. So we wanted to get you updated on the site plan issues first. The ARB and the exterior elevations will be provided at the next meeting for your review, after some general tweaks with the applicant. Just to touch on zoning, we would be requesting the board consider two waivers on this application. One would be for lot area, required is 1 acre for a house of worship in the zone. We have .94 gross, and our net is .81. So we'd be requesting that. And our second waiver we'd be requesting would be for lot development coverage, and that really is, in turn, pertains to the parking. The code allows for 10% in this zone, we'd be requesting 35%. And again, that would be based upon the net lot area, not the gross. And that in turn is based on the parking. We are providing the required number of spaces per the code for this application. This will be a full-time use, you know, week and weekends. The applicant feels that, that he needs the parking, he wouldn't want to have any less spaces, because it will be fully used. That's where it is at this point in time. I know we left off with the board, I think you may have wanted to do a site walk based upon getting the upgraded plans and the floor plans. I don't know if that's still on the table or not, if you would like to do that. I do have, the applicant has engaged the services of an attorney, who will be providing to you a, I guess, a memorandum of some sort, providing the basis for the proposal of the waivers, which we will be submitting along with the architecturals. And I know since we don't have the architecturals, there's really not much that we can accomplish, I don't think, at this point, because we want to roll it into, you know, one public hearing for ARB and site plan. So that's where we're at.
I have a, I have a quick question. The way it's listed, the way this is listed, it says, "For proposed conversion of a portion of an existing single-family dwelling." But according, are they gonna live in here, in this building?
No, there'll be no, no residents after this.
So I guess the application needs to be cleaned up, that it's not gonna be for a portion of an existing single-family? That is for the entire?
Yes, for, okay. That's on the application?
Well, it's listed on, on here, so the building department must have picked it up from the application.
Okay.
So that was just my concern, that it's...
Yeah, no, it's a complete removal of the single-family component.
Okay.
And it's, it's straight-up shul use.
Alright, so that's what, I just wanted to clarify that, that it's, this is, no one's going to be living there, it's just being used for shul for religious education?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to be clear on that. Okay. Dennis? Before you go, we received a short EAF on October 5th, 2018. We received a part two from Rick's office on March 1st, and we have the memo from H2M on March 14th, so I guess we'll review Dennis's memo. You still here?
Yep.
Okay.
Never had a problem communicating tonight, sorry.
That's okay, it's...
Alright, they are looking for...
It's Rick fever.
A waiver. Normally, you don't have that provision, but this is, I believe, under the, the code gives due discretion to waive zone requirements for places of worship, if it would place a substantial burden on the religious exercise of a person, religious assembly or institution by the implementation of those regulations. And that's, that's the parking issue here, and the coverage issue, that is. As far as, I'm gonna jump down through a few things, since we talked about them. The water system here is a water service from the water system that is owned by, here is Joel. The applicant's advised that they will confirm compliance of the change of use with the water district operator. So I guess you're gonna submit that, John?
Yeah, we'll get that.
Okay.
Pretty spoken with them, but we'll get that in writing.
Okay. And the wastewater here is designed, is estimated 516 gallons per day. I'm not exactly sure of the nature of the use here, it's not a single-family home, it's basically what a single-family home. There's a lot of individuals, I don't know if there's multiple events during the day, there's a changeover of people, and that's our people flow, I just don't know how that was generated.
That was generated based on other facilities to this use. So what we did was, we had two other facilities that were similar, we saw what their usage was, and then we also applied the DEC standards for the wastewater for the hydraulic loading, and we came to that.
Okay. The only thing is, when you talk about similar, and you looked at it, I didn't, but I haven't got that much experience, perhaps, as you do with shuls, but this is only, I think, the second shul that I've seen with a large parking lot. Many times, they don't have parking lots, people walk to the service, and that's what they, they promoted the fact that they don't need parking lots. This one appears that it may have a different type of use activity than the others that we've seen. And I just want to make sure if you're comparing this to other shuls and their water consumption, that it's an apples-to-apples comparison, and those are, they have the same kinds of activities.
Correct. Yeah, this is, this is what they, we would call a full-use shul. So this is, you know, through the week, not just on the weekends. So for instance, the previous application I was before you was Milville Lane, that was just a weekend-use shul. So during the week, those congregants go to another facility, which is similar to this type of facility, it's, it's an all, all-week facility.
So full use is seven days?
Yes. Minus, I think, I don't know, maybe Sunday, I think, or, because they, well, ten Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I think, is a quiet day.
Okay.
Okay, on stormwater, we've asked you to provide some kind of stormwater retention on-site. And the reason for that is this is not usual for a residential development. I'm not sure of all of downstream impacts. The other alternative would be to review all downstream impacts. I think it might be easier just to provide some kind of retention on-site and manage your water supply, assuming there's no high groundwater table, and it's possible to do it on-site, no rock.
Okay. No problem.
There were some minor details in there on catch bases and things, I'm sure that you take a look at that, and see if you can comply. If you can't, we can talk about it. We had some differences in our MS4 review recently in surveying from what you had, so you can take a look at that.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, where exactly are you referring to?
I'll tell you what I can do, I can send you our mapping in the back.
Perfect.
That would be best. We made some comments on erosion center of control plan, and I'm sure they can address that. The traffic circulation, there's some screening requirements in the code for parking lots that are but residential areas. I wouldn't normally do that in a residential area, but this, this is a different one. So there is a requirement in your code for landscaping around the periphery to shield things. And I, is this, are there nighttime activities as well?
Yes.
Alright. Then shielding along the side of our burn would be appropriate, so there's not lights shining out to other properties and with a turnover in the lot.
This is a corner lot.
It's a, it's kind of a corner lot.
Because it's a three-way stop.
Well, Scunny Monk is the same road, and it sweeps through, and this is a pie-shaped lot.
Yep.
It's not your typical corner lot, where there's clearly two frontages on two different roads. I wrestled with the fact of whether to call it a corner lot, quite frankly, or not.
It's pie-shaped, you're right about, but it's a, but where Owens comes to Scunny Monk, and Scunny Monk sweeps up, there is a three-way stop there, that I, I know there is.
Yeah, I mean, here's the intersections here, so it's, it's not your traditional corner lot.
Right, it's a, yeah.
Yeah. I think we can deal with it as a corner lot, because I don't know how else you define it, but...
Yeah, I mean, we've taken setbacks as a corner lot.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate. There are other requirements for parking lots that have this number of cars, and that is the width of the driveway, which I think we're okay, it's 12 and 1/2. But there's also requirements for interior landscaping. I don't know if that's gonna be appropriate on this, but if we get the landscaping around the exterior, that might be sufficient. This is a residential neighborhood, I know you didn't ask for a report from NPV for this application, but you may want to have Stu take a look at it when he brings in a landscaping plan, and have him make sure, because of where it is.
Yeah, we have something from October. I figured we'd go over what we're doing here, and then we'll go into landscaping.
Well, we, I talked a little bit about the shul, what I can understand from what we're doing, and made a few comments about adequate, you know, E-res, and that most of that is gonna be handled by Gary's office for the occupancy and the rooms.